Thank you for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Reverend Jim Jones from Blazey and Grace Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for asking me to do the invocation today on the National Day of Prayer. Incredible day out front and been able to pray for and with a lot of people and it's been a joy as well. We look at that the way that the Apostle Paul looked at in his first letter to the Corinthians in chapter nine, verse eight, verse nineteen, when he said, "For though I am free from all men, I have made myself a servant to all men." And that's the way we like to look at it, is we meet people right where they're at, not the way where we think they should be or where. So, let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this evening and for this time that you come together with our city officials and to make decisions that affect the citizens of this great city. Lord, I ask that we also would pray for our nation and for the leaders of our nation, for our President, our Vice President, and our Congress and Senators. Lord, I ask that we would pray for the community. Lord, let this community come together as one and to be strong and to stand united. Help the council and those that make the decisions to make decisions that would be pleasing to you, decisions that would be for the good of those that live here. And Father, let us just continue to do things that are glorifying to you. Help us to see that we need to turn to you as a nation and change some things on television and in the streets and get back to knowing that this is one nation under God, and we thank you for that. Help us, Lord, to strive to be better citizens, to be better people, and help us, Lord God, to be like your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus, in whose name we pray. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to the agenda item number three, which is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed, can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the March 7, 2019 budget development meeting, April 4, 2019 walkability discussion meeting, clarification meeting, and regular council meeting, April 11, 2019 work session, April 17, 2019, and April 18, 2019 executive sessions, and April 18, 2019 city council liaison work session clarification meeting. And B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider the payroll and material claims for the month of April 2019. Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I am presenting the payroll and claims report for April of 2019. Total payroll and material claims were $6,334,634. Payroll-related claims were $3,671,958. We had changes in field positions of minus two full-time employees, an increase of 19 part-time, 11 seasonal, for a total increase of 28 positions for the month. Vendor claims were $2,662,675, and you can see the largest vendor claim was to ICRIM for $345,738 for half of the liability insurance premium. We had a payment to RSCI for $277,000 for the WPC phosphorus design. Hydro Specialties Company, $194,540 for water for Itron erped meters and pilot valves. We also had a payment to A-plus contractors for $118,548 for WPC for the Griffith sewer line replacement. The rest of the items listed explains 87.39% of all the vendor claims for the month of April. On the back of the report, we have given you information on our April purchase card activity. So you can see we had 1,478 transactions for an amount of $426,975, and we had 179 cardholders with transactions. We also had seven purchase agents that had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and those types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions, Council? No, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Move on to C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jane Ginniger to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Ginniger's term will begin May 8, 2019 and will expire May 8, 2021. D, resolution to destruction of city records. Council may wish to adopt a resolution providing for the destruction of temporary records pursuant to Idaho Code 50-907 and the city's record policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we approve the consent agenda as you have presented it.
Second.
So we have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is Communication and Proclamations. Before we have actually four proclamations, but before we get to those, we have a scout that walked in. We'd like him to stand up and tell us what troop you're from and...
I am from Troop 369.
369?
And you are?
My name is Hayden Lindquist.
Hayden Lindquist, it's great to meet you, Hayden. Thank you very much for being here. Hopefully you get a lot out of this meeting tonight. We will, let's hope so. We will move to proclamations. We have four different proclamations. The first proclamation is Drinking Water Week, which will be from Councilmember Roger Bray. We'll read it. The second will be Public Works Week, will be Council President Jim Johnston. The third one will be Older Americans Month. Councilmember Rick Cheatham will read it. Census 2020 Complete Count Committee, Councilmember Heidi Adamson will read it.
Roger.
Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, a low mortality rate, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we all are stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim Drinking Water Week, May 5 through 11, 2019.
Thank you.
Move to event.
Well, thanks, Mayor and Council. This means a lot. We appreciate your continued support in our community and joining other communities throughout the nation in celebrating National Drinking Water Week. As part of our celebration, we will be hosting an open house event at the Water Operations Facility located at 1889 North Arthur Street, and that will be next Monday through Thursday. We'll be joined with other departments throughout the city. That's our Water Pollution Control Department, our Science and Environmental Department, as well as the county, talking about the importance of protecting and preserving our drinking water sources. So anyways...
And we're still number one in water, right?
As far as we know.
We're not leaving that one out. We're going to stay number one.
Good.
You might mention that. You received a reward for clean, safe drinking water.
We did, yeah. So last year we were recognized within our Intermountain section for our drinking water taste test, and by submitting a sample as part of that, we joined other communities within our Intermountain region and won out of all the submittals, both groundwater supplies as well as surface water supplies, and took the best of show. The best of show entries get to participate nationally, and not only nationally, but you are recognized within North America. And we were recognized within the top five on that as well. So it was, it was an honor.
Bottoms up. Bottoms up.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Idaho, and whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Idaho to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim May 19 through 25, 2019 to be Public Works Week in Pocatello, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Signed, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello.
Thank you. Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director for the City of Pocatello. It's an honor for me to stand before you tonight and represent our public works employees. We have a great group of employees, and they really bring a vital service to our community. You stop and think about what public works really is, and it really impacts every aspect of our lives. And so we have a lot of really dedicated employees, and we appreciate you guys recognizing their efforts and the importance that they are to our community. The Governor will also be issuing a proclamation at the state, at the state level for Public Works Week as well. So thank you very much for this.
Whereas the City of Pocatello includes a growing number of older Americans, approximately 9,584, who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences, and whereas the City of Pocatello is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society, and whereas the City of Pocatello recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all, and whereas the City of Pocatello can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Older Americans Month in Pocatello, and urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community.
My name is Krista. I'm the area agency on aging. So I'd just like to thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time and recognition of the seniors in our area. Appreciate it. Whereas in the year 2020, as mandated by the Constitution, a decennial census will be taken, and every person living in the United States will be called upon to participate, and in so, and in doing so, will help to ensure the well-being of our families and our communities. And whereas the 2020 census data is vital to our state in that it ensures fair congressional representation in the U.S. House of Representatives and state legislative districts, and whereas census data is the basis for how more than $675 billion in federal funds are distributed annually to state, local, and tribal areas that help improve transportation, schools, hospitals, public works, and other vital programs. And whereas information collected by the census is used by state and local officials to determine where to build schools, roads, libraries, hospitals, and other facilities. Census data is also used in attracting businesses to state and local areas, and census data helps local governments provide greater public safety and emergency preparedness, and whereas the 2020 census will create jobs in communities and is meant to represent everyone, therefore the Bannock County Commissioners and mayors within the county do hereby proclaim to be committed partners with the U.S. Census Bureau in achieving the goal of a full and accurate 2020 census count for Bannock County. Thank you very much.
So thank you all for, thank you, Mayor and Council, for doing this proclamation and recognizing the importance of the 2020 census. I have the honor of being asked to co-chair this Complete Count Committee for Bannock County. So it's our whole area, and actually we got all the cities in the county as well as Bannock County itself to do a proclamation and to sign on to this. So it's really important that we get a complete count. You mentioned the total amount of money that gets distributed in the U.S. We got a new number on Monday, 3.6 billion for Idaho. So we need to get an accurate count so that we get our share of that money and that it goes to the important programs that it needs to go to. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item five is our calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On May 9, 9:00 AM work session followed by a budget development meeting. May 14, 10:30 AM special council meeting. May 16, 9:00 AM budget development meeting. May 16, 5:30 PM clarification meeting. May 16, 6:00 PM regular city council meeting. Other events, May 4, Idaho State University graduation. Congratulations to all the graduates. May 4 is Portinone Valley Fund Run Series with the Law Day Run. Contact Parks Recreation Office for more information. May 4 is also the citywide cleanup day. There will be a free breakfast at 8:30 AM at Caldwell Park. May 6, meet police chief candidates, 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM in the council chambers. May 6 through the 9 is National Water Week. 28th Annual Open House will be held at the Water Department, 1889 North Arthur Street. May 11, city auction at Primetime Auctions. May 12, Mother's Day at the Zoo Idaho. Mothers receive half off admission when, half off admission price when accompanied by a paid child. Reminders, month of May is dog licenses are on sale for half price. Zoo Idaho is now open seven days a week. We'll move on to agenda item number six is Hayden and Hayes Subdivision short plot. Jody Green of Rio Properties LLC and Adam T. Waldron, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted a short plot to subdivide .0.29 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The subdivision is located at the intersection of Hayden Street and Hayes Avenue and is to be known as the Hayden and Hayes Subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the short plat.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, open container waiver request, Old Town Pocatello.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recognize a correction that was noted on the earlier agenda.
Second.
I guess that's a motion.
That's a motion. We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Bray. The motion is to correct the wording in the agenda item number seven.
Correct. That's exactly what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, open container waiver request, Old Town Pocatello. The council may wish to consider a request from Old Town Pocatello for a waiver of the open container ordinance to allow alcohol to be consumed in the 200 block of West Fremont and the 400 block of North Union Pacific Avenue on Wednesday, May 22, to August 28, 2019 for Revive at Five, and on September 4, 2019 for End of Summer Bash from 4:30 PM to 9:00 PM, beer and wine, on the 200 and 300 blocks of East Center Street. On August 3, 2019, for the Downtown Days Neon Street Dance from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, beer, wine, and spirits. And on the 200 to 400 blocks of North Main Street on September 7, 2019, for the Second Annual Brew Fest for, two from, Brew Fest Two, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, beer and wine. If the open container ordinance is waived, it should be contingent upon the applicant meeting police department requirements and purchasing appropriate permits.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman, Manon.
I move that we approve agenda item number, the corrected agenda item number seven, subject to police department requirements and purchasing appropriate permits.
Second.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, representation agreement regarding opioid litigation. Council may wish to approve a representation agreement with Keller Linkner LLC, Consovoi McCarthy Park P LLC, and Mooney Wayland P LLC for prosecution of claims against certain pharmaceutical companies involved in the making, in the marketing, sell, and distributing of opioids, and authorize the mayor to sign the representation agreement with said law firms. This is a contingency fee agreement, therefore there is no cost to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the representation agreement with Keller Linkner and LLC, Consovoi McCarthy Park P LLC, and Mooney Wayland P LLC for prosecution of claims against certain pharmaceutical companies, and authorize the mayor to sign that representation agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Bray.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we vote, can I make a statement?
Sure.
I understand why we're doing this. I'm going to vote against it. I frankly feel that this action is, just falls short of extortion of these companies. Reading all the documentation we were provided by these law firms, this issue of pharmaceutical opioids has been declined since the early 90s, and I think reaching back 20 years to prosecute something that they have already begun to correct is wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Move to agenda item nine, airport lease agreement McNabb Trucking. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the city and McNabb Trucking for approximately 4,750 square feet of warehouse space located in the north half of the building number 231, located at 1963 Beechcraft for the purpose of cold storage of business supplies and equipment, along with outdoor storage for truck parking, consisting of 190 feet along the east side of the building and 48 feet along the north side. The lease term will be five years at a rental rate of $300 per month, to be reviewed annually and increased at least by the amount of the Consumer Price Index increase for the previous year. Lease will be responsible for, or leasee will be responsible for the maintenance of the building.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move for approval to agenda item number nine, the airport lease agreement with McNabb Trucking.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, a resolution adopting intergovernmental agreements, North Gate Urban Renewal Area. Council may wish to adopt a subject to final action on the proposed North Gate Urban Renewal Area, the following resolutions. A...
Mr. Mayor, I wish to recuse myself from the voting and discussion of this item based upon public perception that I have a marketing interest in this project.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda, A, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Pocatello to provide for an intergovernmental agreement for roles and responsibilities under Idaho Code Section 50-2906 3B between the City of Chubik, Idaho and the City of Pocatello, Idaho, providing for areas outside the city limits to be included within the urban renewal area and providing an effective date. B, a resolution of the mayor, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Pocatello to provide for an intergovernmental agreement for roles and responsibilities under Idaho Code Section 50-2906 3B between Bannock County, Idaho and the City of Pocatello, Idaho, providing for areas outside the city limits to be included within the urban renewal area and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I'd move for approval of agenda item number two, Resolutions A and B adopting the intergovernmental agreements on the North Gate Urban Renewal Area.
Agenda item number 10?
What did I say?
Two.
10, I'm sorry.
That's okay. A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Manon. So any discussion? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Adamson.
Thank you. Forgot Johnston wasn't doing it. Okay, then we will move to an order, agenda item 11. We have four ordinances, so...
Adamson.
Thank you. Forgot Johnston wasn't doing it. Okay, then we will move to Agenda Item 11. We have four ordinances. So 11A, An Ordinance Approving the Urban Renewal Plan for North Gate Urban Renewal Project, which plan includes revenue allocation financing provisions. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we have a motion on the reading of the ordinance, could we have a little discussion?
Absolutely.
We closed the public hearing and have not talked about, or processed anything that was said there or elsewhere. I'd like to start the discussion by saying, you know, I'm not against this, but I don't think it's been studied adequately. It's a huge footprint that we're looking at. We have one of the most successful TIF records in Idaho, and I want to protect that. We have had discussion along the line and suggestions from developers that they would reduce the footprint of this TIF based on so many residences, that has not happened. And so I looked at our taxes. Our taxes are at 1.14%, which is about 20% higher than any place in Idaho of the major eight cities. That's 20% higher than the next city. And so I just don't feel like I've received the facts from the other side. I've talked to many, many people in our community who see this as potentially a tax-consuming entity. When you look at the City of Pocatello, and I've got a couple of forms, I should pass these out to all of you. I went ahead and made some of my own forms because I've had no luck or success in getting anybody to do even a cursory study. I make no claim to being an economist or somebody capable, but on this sheet, just looking at what some of the performance levels could be, I came up with about a $44 million outlay for the City of Pocatello. And that's just looking at expenses over the life of this TIF. I have another form I'm going to send your way. I produced this, and again, I'm making no claim of being an authority at all on these. If you look at this, I took the documents that were included in the TIF plan. That's reflected in the items that are highlighted blue, red, and yellow. It's projecting the amount they said that would be in the TIF district based on their expectations of growth. The green area on here is an area that's looking at the expectations based on what has been said publicly about, they're going to start with 350 residential units and try to build 350 a year. It gets to 6,550 units, but that is short of what the total build-out is projected to be. The way I did this, I divided what I was able to get, and it's really hard to find our exact property tax because it's stated in different ways, in different places, but I just took kind of the norm for 2017, $27,230, $27,230,849, divided it by our population and came up with a per capita equivalent for each person in Pocatello. It's on that basis that I ran all the other numbers based on each person that will be in this TIF district. If we're applying our taxes the way we should, then every person should be paying just the right level. And if they're paying just the right level, that means when we put other people into the city that aren't paying taxes, they're pushing the level of the other rate payers. So I ran these and I, the one aggressive thing, and again, I'm not an economist. I think there are people that have algorithms that can do this kind of stuff. They can look far beyond what I looked at, but this is just the taxes paid, property taxes. When I ran one number, I looked for the per capita differential between what will be paid in this district over the life of it versus what could be estimated to be subsidizing this district. The aggressive growth, and again, I think this has a lot of area to come back because that aggressive growth might close a district far earlier than what it's scheduled. But just looking at the 40 years, I could come up with $131 million of shortcomings to the citizens of Pocatello because of the number of people there. When I looked at the high growth that was in the study, I could see that we would come up about 20, I think it's $23 million in taxpayer-funded activity. When I looked at moderate growth, I came up with about $16.7 million. And when I came up with the slow growth, the shortfall was $7 million, $7.6 million. You know, when you look at this, they're going to start paying a certain rate that only goes up a little bit every year. That's in this plan based on the evaluation. The most they'll ever pay in the life of this as taxes to the City of Pocatello, not to the TIF, is $270,000 one year. I think it's appropriate to look at property taxes. We have several other funding sources that can come into play, but if you just look at the property taxes, it shows that there is a potential. I would be fine if a study said we're going to come out somewhere between the yellow and the red areas here, the slow to moderate growth, because I think we could absorb that easier. But if we get into these other areas where we're really paying for people to be participants in Pocatello who aren't really paying to be participants in Pocatello based on taxes, this could get out of hand. Just think, they can come play golf for the same price as anybody in Pocatello, they can come and use our rec center for the same thing. Their streets will be plowed, they'll be sanded, but they're not really paying for that service until 2041. And so I really think that it'd be appropriate for us to commission a study that informs us from the other side, from the consumer's basis, from the taxpayers' basis, from the citizens' basis, from Pocatello's health itself, so that we really know. I cannot, I cannot say that I've seen anything convince me that says we're protected by this. I've had a person come talk to me that's been involved in major, major developments throughout the United States, and they question our putting so much residential in it. I've had some financial people who've raised the same question. I've talked to people who have been engaged in helping us develop TIFs in the past, and they really question the amount of residential properties that are in this area. Jeff, I've got one question. You can answer this with a shake of your head. Do we have any agreements right now for participation by developers in our infrastructure plan, the $200 million plan for water and for sewer?
Formal agreements?
Yeah.
Not that I worry about.
So we're out there on that $200 million, and I understand that TIF's going to pay back some of it in that district that they're doing, but we've got to get supply lines up there, and it's not because of anything anybody else in Pocatello's done, it's because of the new load that the northeast area will do. We had that presentation on March 14th, I believe it was, where we looked at the northeast plan for water, the northeast plan for sewer, and it's a cumulative total of somewhere around $200 million. And so I really think we ought to take a, just step back, people are not against this. To a person I've talked to, they're not against this, but they really urge us to go in with both eyes wide open, to be prudent and to be patient, to see how this really should develop. We have the capacity as the council to negotiate the TIF to the appropriate parameters we believe it should be. We are the fiduciary officers for the City of Pocatello, and I think we need to take a clean look at what other sources could tell us. And it might be I'm way off base, and it could be many other people are way off base. But at the same time, if we're not, it could really be a detrimental thing for Pocatello to be so committed. So that's all I've got to say in terms of discussion.
Okay, anyone else? I believe that, I will just say and then we'll move on. I believe it has been vetted. We've been working on this TIF district for two years, or three years. The PDA has commissioned and got the numbers and have made sure that it does work. If it does indeed work, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. There was a time when they looked at it and the people that came back and said, "You can do the TIF district, but it doesn't pencil out." They went back, they talked to the developers, they got the information that they needed from the developers, they looked at it, they reevaluated it, they came back and said it works and it works great. There is no, there is very, very little, if any, risk to the city in this TIF district. It is all reimbursed. The developer will make the investment and it's a reimbursement for that development. It would be a whole different ballgame, in my mind, if it was bonded debt, one thing that we won't consider. I wouldn't consider it sitting here, and I don't believe this council would consider a bonded debt. This is a TIF district that the developer will get back what he puts into it, and it works. It's, every indication shows that it works.
I'm not arguing against what the plan we've received in terms of performing within the TIF district. What I'm really stating is, do we know what our liability will be as a city for pulling this mini-city into our limits and they pay minimal amounts of property taxes over the next 20 years? Minimal amount.
Well, I think that, I think that that's a question, it's an impossible question to get an answer to, quite frankly. I mean, any TIF district that you look at, any of them, that the city has entered into, you don't have guarantees. You don't know what those are. Pocatello Square's a great one, a great example, the city council at the time, and by the way, nobody on the council here, was on the council at that time when that district was made, but the city went into debt on that with the bond. It was a risk. That was very, very risky. It worked out. We have the privilege of being able to close that district this month with the Pocatello Development Authority, but we don't know, and we didn't know what the risk to the rest of the city was at that time.
But I would say-
Hoku is another example. We don't know and didn't know what that risk was, but it was set up right. There was no reimbursement if there was no increment. That was a thing that, it's a defunct business right now, but the city paid nothing into that at all. And right now, it's sitting there, we don't know what's going to happen with that, but that was, that was an example that it went awry on you. We didn't know what was going to happen at the time. All the indicators showed that it was going to be a great, great thing and it would be good for the council and for the city. I don't think the council has ever asked for an analysis on whether or not the, what the TIF district costs the rest of the city because you set one up, ever in history until now. So it's difficult.
I can tell you, Mayor, that I have talked to people, and by the way, I wasn't on the formation of the North Yellowstone, but I was on the amended part of that, the part that knew that Costco was coming in because that property could not be included in the first because we had to purchase property there. And I talked to individuals that were part of setting that up, and they said, "We've never set up a TIF district without knowing that there were anchor places coming in." And we do not know of an anchor place in this TIF district. And we have formed, we formed one district. I was here when we formed the district that's out at the airport, but we knew somebody was locating at the airport at that time, and we knew that there was somebody that would be an anchor point out there. Costco, we knew was a destination store in one place. Lowe's, and I believe it was-
Only Lowe's.
Actually Costco had not, we looked at the old minutes and Costco came, signed after.
After.
They had not-
We had, we had some talks with them. We knew that they were coming. They couldn't sign before because we didn't have the Forest Service land that they required. Once we got that land, we knew they were coming. We knew that. That was the only thing that was contingent, was buying that Forest Service land that was at the back of that property so we could fulfill the requirement for the amount of acres they needed. And they became an anchor point that's just caused that development. And so my point is simply, I think we need to look at how, is there any risk? And I can't say assuredly there is, but I don't think anybody here can say there isn't based on property taxes.
We have actually asked that question to the experts that did the plan, and they said the city is protected better than any-
The city is within the district. I asked that question that night of the guy that did the plan, and he said, "We were only charged to do a study within the confines of the TIF district. We had nothing to do with anything beyond that."
But that's, but it is protected, the city is protected more in this district than it, than any district that has, and there is a tenant there, it's the Portonoff Hospital. They're going to build a big campus up there.
But that's not an outside source, it is a competing source.
That's a, that's a great source. So we do have a secure candidate, so there's no sense in me arguing with this. We've done the studies, we know the studies, and I can appreciate what you're saying, and I can appreciate that. So with that being said-
So I was going to say, I understand the concerns of Councilmember Bray, and I think another added security is that the developers have prioritized paying the government entities first and foremost before they even recoup their own investments. So I think that really puts us in a pretty safe spot to be able to support this.
And I had a conversation with the consultant earlier before the public hearing, and he said that he did feel comfortable that the City of Pocatello had minimal risk and that the risk was more with the developer. And he wasn't just speaking about inside the TIF district, but overall that it was minimizing our risk.
And I agree. You know, whether we, whether we do this TIF or not, those water supply lines to the northeast area are going to have to be built. We have one water source up in that area, and we need a secondary backup source. That's going to have to happen whether this TIF happens or not. I've got great confidence in the developers, Mr. Pappy, Buck Swainy, those guys have experience in communities all over the country, and they've been tremendously successful. They're investing their money, this isn't leverage money, this is their money, and they don't get it back unless this thing is successful. And when you get a guy like Don Zeeby promoting this thing, as aggressive as he's been, this is going to succeed. I have great confidence in those guys.
I agree.
I agree. Any other comments? Okay, then, council, the dis- ordinance is in front of you. How do you wish it to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 11A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication due to the pleadings of our attorney.
What?
He didn't want to have to read this, I think we'd be here tomorrow.
It's like 200 pages.
We need a second. Oh, second, sorry.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, approving the urban renewal plan for the North Gate Urban Renewal Project, which plan includes revenue allocation financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to county and state officials and other taxing entities, providing severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eleven B, an ordinance adding subsection to chapter twelve-point-three-eight-point-zero-three-zero, revision to the city, which provides guidelines for reconvened cemetery spaces to owners whose spaces have been, have reverted to the city. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance agenda item number eleven B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending a portion of chapter twelve-point-three-eight cemetery, more specifically amending section twelve-point-three-eight-point-zero-three-zero, reversion to the city, to provide guidelines for reconvened cemetery spaces to owners whose spaces have reverted to the city, providing that all other sections of chapter twelve-point-three-eight not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eleven C, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title Twelve, Chapter Four, Sidewalk and Curbs, by amending section twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero, owner's duty to, to construct, repair, or replace curbs and sidewalks to specifically require maintenance of curbing and repelling, and enacting a new twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-four-zero, city's ability to require construction, repair, or replacement of curbs and sidewalks to grant authority to the city's Public Works Director or his designee to enforce requirements listed in section twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Yes.
I move the ordinance agenda item eleven C be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending portions of chapter twelve-point-zero-four sidewalks, curbs, in the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello nineteen eighty-three, by amending section twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero, owner's duty to construct, repair, or replace curbs and sidewalks, to specifically require maintenance of curbing and repelling, and enacting a new section, twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-four-zero, city's ability to require construction, repair, or replacement of curbs and sidewalks, to grant authority to the city's Public Works Director or his designee to enforce requirements listed in twelve-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero, and providing that all other sections of chapter twelve-point-zero-four not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray? Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Eleven D, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title Thirteen, Chapter Four, Water Department General Regulations, and Title Thirteen, Chapter Sixteen, Sanitary Sewer Regulations, amending sections thirteen-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero, connection to potable water supply, thirteen-point-zero-four-point-zero-seven-zero, outside city connections, thirteen-point-one-six-point-zero-eight-five, connection to proximate sewer required, and thirteen-point-one-six-point-two-two-zero billing, to clarify the connection requirements for water and sewer services. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Adamson?
I move the ordinance agenda item eleven D be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title Thirteen, Chapter Zero-Four, Water Department General Regulations, and Title Thirteen, Chapter Sixteen, Sanitary Sewer Regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by amending sections thirteen-point-zero-four-point-zero-three-zero, connection to potable water supply, thirteen-point-zero-four-point-zero-seven-zero, outside city connections, thirteen-point-one-six-point-zero-eight-five, connection to proximate sewer required, and thirteen-point-one-six-point-two-two-zero billing. To clarify the connection requirements for water and sewer services, providing that all other sections of chapter thirteen-point-zero-four and chapter thirteen-point-one-six shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve is discussion items. Nobody has signed up for discussion items, and so we would like to thank you very much. And I would like to thank the council for their hard work today. We had a long, hard budget meeting, and we appreciate, I really appreciate their attendance and their, their hard work there. Thank you for being with us tonight. With that, we are adjourned.